Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the Ordinary Council meeting of the 27th of October 2020. It's now 9:02. Apologies for starting two minutes late. We had a few technical issues at our end. So I'll call attendance at commencement. And I can see in attendance we have the Deputy Mayor, councillor Johnic, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Fechner, councillor Milligan and councillor Kuntzelman. I understand we have councillor Ireland. She was approved to attend via audio link at the council ordinary meeting on the 29th of September. I believe that she can hear us. I'm unaware if we're, I think we're having some technical issues with if we can hear her. They're working on that because I think she's dialing in from overseas. So we'll see how that goes and I'll take, I guess from yourself, CEO, how we work through that. We'll move on to an acknowledgement of country. Councillor Kuntzelman, would you like to do that?
Thank you, Mayor. We recognise that there are traditional custodians of this land on which we meet today to make important decisions. The spirit of those traditional custodians is with us today as we try to make the best decisions on the use of that land. We pay respects to those traditional custodians, acknowledging past and present leaders and the encouragement of new leaders as they emerge.
Thank you, councillor Kuntzelman. Now moving to opening prayer. And Heavenly Father, pray that we who seek to serve you in the affairs of this council may have wisdom in our deliberations, the guiding of your hand in our works and the grace to serve together to advance the prosperity of our city. Amen. Move on to apologies and leave of absence. I have none. Condolences, there are none. Item six, tributes, there are none. Seven, presentation of petitions, there are none. Eight, presentations and deputations, there are none. Nine, public participation, none. Ten, matters of public interest, there are none. Moving on to item 11, which is declarations of interest in matters on the agenda. Are there any declarations on any of the matters before us today?
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act of 2009, I councillor Andrew Fechner informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item number 15.6. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest are my business interests in both A1A Proprietary Limited and Bahzenburg Proprietary Limited, both located in the top of town. I plan on dealing with this by leaving the room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you very much, councillor Fechner. Are there any other declarations of interest?
Thank you, Mayor. I can't get into my computer presently to refer to some notes. So just checking, was there a CBD matter in the Governance and Transparency Committee at the last?
So I think it'd probably be out of 15.6, the Ipswich Central redevelopment.
I'm referring to the Governance and Transparency Committee.
Oh, apologies. I'll just, yes, I think there was. My apologies. I'll just look that up. No, actually not. I thought, I do recall that as well. I don't, but I can't see that in the agenda. There was Nemo Street, a notice of motion. Procurement. Maybe it was another one. Pardon me, why?
I think it was the time before. Yep.
Okay.
That's all good. Thanks for the assistance for full openness with everyone. I've had to reset my password, so I made the new password and then it said that I'm locked out of my account, so. Pretty good. In that respect, in accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act, I councillor Jacob Madsen informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item 15.6.
So pardon me, we can hear interference from councillor Ireland, so I can't, we actually hear what's happening? And I'm getting an echo back from what I'm saying as well. Is the echo still there? No, it's gone. Okay, Deputy Mayor, I'll let you continue on.
In item 15.6, titled Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee's report, the nature of the declarable conflict of interest is I'm on the executive of the Ipswich Tradeshall and Labour Day Committee and our building, the Ipswich Tradeshall, is adjacent to all of the CBD redevelopment works that council is undertaking. As a result of my conflict of interest, I'll leave the meeting room while the matter is considered and voted on.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. I'll just double check that councillor, we can hear, can she speak in at the moment? Councillor Ireland, I just wanted to check in to see that you can speak.
Yes, I can hear you, Mayor.
Wonderful. That's great. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to the confirmation of minutes, item 12, which is the confirmation of the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 29th of September 2022. I will move those. Do I have a second for those? Thank you, councillor Milligan. Any discussion on the matters of the minutes? No, I'll put the item 12 to the, 2.1 to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We move on to item 13, which is the mayoral minute. It's a mayoral minute on the forensic audit of the council finances. I've just added a date to that as an amendment after speaking with the auditor general. I just want to check, I did provide the correct spelling of the auditor general's name. Has that been corrected?
It will be corrected in a minute.
Thank you very much. As a mayoral motion, it's moved and seconded, so I'll speak to it. When I stood for election in 2020, I stood on a platform of transparency and accountability in council. A key part of that platform was opening councils' books to let the sun shine in. We've made great strides to increase accountability and transparency since our election with the establishment of the Transparency Integrity Hub. This is a nation-leading achievement that all councils can feel proud of, the role that we have all played in establishing it. Ipswich City Council has received two national awards for leading transparency and accountability in local government. It was the aim of this council at our very first meeting to publish how the previous council spent residents' hard-earned money. And for this, it was to be published on the 1st of July 2020. Yes, there would have been headlines, but it would have been for a couple of weeks. It certainly my hope that once the truth came out, we as a community could heal and move on. I'm disappointed with the Queensland Information Commissioner's ruling that prevented council proactively publishing this information on the Transparency and Integrity Hub. It's disappointing that former councillors, except for one, haven't consented to publishing the information that would allow us to move on as a community. So we have one key piece of work that remains outstanding, and that is a public understanding of previous councils' financial practices. A full forensic audit was a key plank in my Sunlight project policy during the election. I have a mandate from the people of Ipswich for a full forensic audit. I campaigned heavily on opening the books and a full forensic audit. I received 63% of the vote and I won every single booth, all 56 booths across this city. I have a mandate from the people of Ipswich. Ongoing media reports over the last few months indicate there is far more to the story than council has been allowed to publish to date. A full forensic audit, published for the community to see, will help us to move forward as a community and to get the full picture that our community is entitled to and wants to see. I discussed the possibility of an audit with the Queensland Auditor General last week, who advised that any elected representative is within their rights to request an audit at any time. The local government sector has been through many challenges, as you will know. The community and the state and federal governments need to trust the governance within local government. We will never attract the right type of people standing for office if we are not willing to expose the details of how things went so wrong. For many in the sector, the lack of transparency across the entities within Ipswich City Council remain a stain on all councils. However difficult, however challenging, we cannot be blind to the dwindling trust in political accountability by ignoring such issues. Importantly, this mayoral minute is about requesting the state government through the Queensland Audit Office to undertake the audit, not council, and does not authorize council spending on this audit. I and our community want to move on from the past and the harsh truths that have emerged following the previous council's dismissal. We need the truth to lance the boil. Speculation about the past will only continue and the media interest will continue, while there are questions remaining about what happened here before. A full forensic and transparent audit, published for the community to see, will help put those questions to rest that we can move on as a city and a community. The truth may hurt for a little while, but a lie hurts forever. We have much to be excited about in our future, but we need to understand our past to move forward and to ensure our city is never in that position again. It's moved and seconded. I now open it to the floor for discussion.
Thank you, councillor. In August 2018, after the dismissal of the former council, a team of experts were given control of Ipswich City Council, with Greg Chamello taking the lead. The interim management committee was a team of experts with skills in governance, business and finance, and are highly regarded in their fields. Stan Gallo, KPMG Partner and former Crime and Corruption Commission employee, led the internal investigation of the Ipswich City Council. Steve Greenwood was also a member of the interim management committee and, as we all know, was subsequently appointed by the state government as an advisor to Ipswich City Council during our first 12 months as elected representatives. Ipswich City Council's current Audit and Risk Management Committee, which includes three external professionals with combined years of experience exceeding 100 years in financial auditing and corruption detection, is chaired by former Chair of Queensland's KPMG Practice, Rob Jones, and has for several years now overseen the financial auditing of council's financials, accounting and audit practices, and also works in conjunction with the Queensland Audits Office. With Ipswich City Council having now been under the stewardship of the aforementioned professionals for over four years, I am confident informing the view that had a full forensic audit been warranted or justified, it would have been undertaken. As was shown through the actions of the state government in dismissing the former council and details revealed by the CCC investigation in Operation Windage, much evidence was uncovered and reported on, and indeed, some of it used as evidence during legal proceedings against former elected representatives and council officers in criminal proceedings. As a result of these events, Ipswich City Council has undergone a period of enormous transformation in relation to governance, accountability and financial management. Whilst a full forensic audit has not been undertaken, the lengthy investigations by multiple agencies, including the CCC, complaints and information sent to ASIG, reports tabled by the state government in Parliament, financial analysis undertaken by McGrath Nichols, and importantly, the work undertaken by the interim management committee in the ongoing role of the work of the ICC Audit and Risk Management Committee, arguably have served the same purpose in uncovering systemic financial policy and behavioural problems and failings and implanting change to ensure this never happens again. I have, on more than one occasion, discussed with various professional advisers to council the reasons for a full forensic audit not having been undertaken and if one should be undertaken. And the overwhelming response I received is that it would be an extraordinary amount of work to have forensic accountants pour over 10 years of financial data, a very expensive exercise that is likely to cost in excess of a million dollars, with very little prospects of recovering monies deemed lost or criminal charges being laid, which are the two reasons why any organisation would ever undertake such an audit. Our role and our obligations under the Local Government Act require us to always act in the best, long-term interests of residents and ratepayers and make responsible financial decisions with regard to ratepayers' money. To potentially incur costs in excess of a million dollars, should the state government agree to an audit, but on the condition that it will be at the cost of Ipswich City Council, which they may very well direct, for an audit that is unlikely to provide any monetary benefits to our city, in my view is not a sound or responsible use of ratepayers' money. Separately to the financial costs, this will come at an extraordinary cost to the city's reputation and just as importantly, to the wellbeing of Ipswich City Council staff. As Chair of the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee, my aim is to attract investors to our city, not scare them away. Talk of corruption and missing money is counterintuitive to our efforts to instil confidence in investing in Ipswich. At this point, I would like to remind everyone of an article from the ABC interviewing a Ipswich City Council staff member around the time the corruption allegations became headline news. The real low point came when community members began taking their anger out on staff after the council's sacking. He said people were taking off clothing with council logos and removing lanyards before stepping out of the building to avoid being targeted. I had one driver get abused when they were filling up at a petrol station, accused of being corrupt, and it was suggested they should just drive off with the fuel. It is my view irresponsible of us as elected group to indirectly subject council staff to ongoing scrutiny and negative attention in the pursuit of a political promise. Councillor Kuntzelman and I are acutely aware of the horrible impact it has on staff each time this council or the former council attract media attention regarding corruption and misconduct issues. The reports we see through the Audit and Risk Management Committee are telling and quite frankly heartbreaking. There is a direct correlation between negative media attention regarding corruption and impact on staff wellbeing. Whilst a forensic audit was a key part of your election campaign, it is not something that should come at the cost of our city's reputation or the wellbeing of our staff. Over 12 months ago, Mayor, you went on record stating as follows, the city must move forward from mistakes of the past as avenues to detail them had been exhausted. From a good governance perspective, I don't believe it is appropriate to now commit additional resources, around $1 million, to further investigate past conduct and behaviours, which may never achieve a successful or justifiable outcome. I ask you, what's changed? As elected representatives, when matters are identified or reported, we are obligated to refer those concerns to the appropriate regulatory authorities to assess and investigate. No mayoral minute is required. You are able at any time to write to the state government and appropriate authorities to request a forensic audit if you truly believe material issues have not been investigated. I have asked you if you are privy to any new information that needs to be reported or that has not been investigated, and you have confirmed to me that that is not the case. From the information available to me at this time and from professional advice given to me, I can only conclude that a responsible regulatory authorities have now assessed all relevant matters and made their own findings and decisions. Avenues have been exhausted, and as disappointing as that may be for many residents, we must accept that as decision. Prosperous and future-focused, I respectfully request that we live our values.
Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any other discussion? Thank you, councillor Kuntzelman.
Thank you, Chair. I will vote against a forensic audit for the following reasons. The cost will be prohibitive and it will provide a major distraction. I am not convinced that residents want this investment in examining a past that is already officially agreed to be dubious. My voting against is not an endorsement of past practices, far from it. However, I believe that it is time to move forward on our present path of improved governance and integrity. Transparency and accountability have been demonstrated by this council, sufficient to set it apart from previous councils. I feel we should continue uninterrupted on this path, deal with current issues and inject optimism and energy looking forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Kuntzelman. Any other discussion? If there's another discussion, I'll move into the right of reply. Thank you very much for a considered discussion. I just want to reaffirm a couple of things that have been raised. One is, as you've said, councillor, there has been no forensic audit of the controlled entities. There's been no forensic audit of the controlled entities because corporately, they were structured in a way that that was, that could not happen. I also know that the ARMC only review current issues, that is their remit. And I also, like I said, when I moved it, that there will be no cost for council as well. I do believe I have a community mandate and that the forensic audit would not be a distraction. It's in fact the very truth that our community want. And I guess I'll end in a quote from Theodore Roosevelt, the 26th President of the United States, who said, "In the long run, the most unpleasant truth is a far safer companion than a pleasant falsehood." With that, I'll move the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I'm the only one in the chamber with my hand raised. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Negative.
Thank you. Those who vote against? Thank you. So it's the Deputy Mayor, councillor Johnic, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Fechner, councillor Milligan and councillor Kuntzelman. Thank you very much. So the mayoral motion did not pass. We'll move on to the next matter on the agenda. The next matter on the agenda is item 14.1, which is the response to the notice of motion. And this is a report considering a response to notice of motion raised by councillor Sheila Ireland in relation to Carmichael's Road. A councillor briefing note was circulated to the mayor and councillors on the 29th of September 2022. And so recommend actually that this briefing note be received and noted. Councillor, since you did do this notice of motion, do you wish to move this particular recommendation?
I would, but I haven't got it all in front of me, Mayor. But yes, I move that.
You do? Do I have a? So do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Tully. Would you like to speak to it, councillor Ireland?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Mayor, it's my opinion that when, if you were to have two caravans or trailers trying to pass each other on Carmichael's Road, there are several pinch points. The reporters said that there are several trees that need to be taken down, but they don't give a timeline or that it would be in this year that that would happen. We have spent a lot of money through the Environment Fund to look after Harding's Paddock, and it is a beautiful area. And with the Olympic game, with the games coming up, it's great to keep promoting that as a place for people to go and caravan for weekends. But it's my opinion that that road really needs to be widened in places so that a van and a car could pass safely.
Thank you, councillor Ireland. Councillor Tully is the second. Do you wish to speak to it as well?
No, thanks, Mayor.
I guess my view is that obviously it'd be important to get some costings to see as part of our budget process, councillor Ireland.
That'd be great, please.
Yeah.
I just didn't want to leave it as, as that, you know, it's been noted. I'd like some further action to be directed, please.
So I think our budget workshops start next month, so I assume that you'll put that up as one of those items to be looked at?
I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on item 14.1? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous in the room. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to the Growth, Infrastructure and Waste Committee. And I move that the report of the Growth, Infrastructure and Waste Committee, the 9th of 2022, on the 30th of October 2022, be noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Kuntzelman. Any discussion on that report? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We move on to item 15.2, which is the Governance and Transparency Committee. I'll hand over to the Chair of that to see how he would like this matter dealt with.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd recommend all items be adopted as per the recommendations. But item two, where I'd like to put the item, the word services after advocacy. Just to further clarify some discussion we had a fortnight ago, that that additional recommendation added in by councillor Johnic was about the reporting of advocacy services through the committee structure. The lion's work of this was the, this entire piece of work was actually the alignment of service categories to committees, which is very logical. So, you know, fully supportive of that, just adding that in to clarify that so that it can't be misconstrued any further.
May I also suggest, Deputy Mayor, we also add that to, after the 2032 Olympics and Paralympics, add the word services as well, just so it's clear?
Yes, but after that, I would officially say that we've exhausted all discussion.
Never exhaust this discussion, Deputy Mayor.
Well, you've exhausted me, Mayor.
So I'll just wait for that. So I'll just wait for the, yeah, that's fine. Take your time. So I look at the Deputy Mayor, that you wish to move all items except for item two? And then we'll move item two separately?
Yeah, well, I've separated item two, but I'd like to move that as well, as per our previous discussion.
So under A, it will be advocacy services and then 2032 Olympic and Paralympic services. So there'll be two resolutions here. One is for all items, which I'll just go to there, which will be items one through to eight, except for two. Is that what you're moving to start off with, Deputy Mayor?
That is correct.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Milligan. Any discussion? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. How do you vote, councillor Ireland?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. It's unanimous and carried. We'll now look at item two of the Governance and Transparency Committee, and I'll just make sure we have that on the screen so all councils can see that. Thank you. And councillor, the Deputy Mayor has moved that. Do I have a second for that item? Thank you, councillor Johnic. Any discussion? No. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous in the chamber. How do you vote, councillor Ireland?
Affirmative, please.
Thank you very much. Unanimous and carried. We'll now move on to item 15.3, which is the Community, Culture, Arts and Sports Committee, and I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee to see how we'd like to progress that report.
Thanks, Mayor. I move that council adopt the recommendations of the Community, Culture, Arts and Sports Committee, number nine, held on the 13th of October 2022.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Kuntzelman. Councillor Fechner, would you wish to speak to it? No? Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item 15.4, which is the Economic and Industry Development Committee. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee to see how she would like to have this matter, this report dealt with.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the recommendations of the Economic and Industry Development Committee, held on the 13th of October, be adopted by the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Kuntzelman. Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Now move on to item 15.5, which is the Environment Sustainability Committee. I hand over to the Chair of that committee to see how we'd like that report dealt with.
Thank you, Chair. I'll move that council adopt the recommendations of the Environment Sustainability Committee, meeting number nine of 13th of October.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Johnic. Any discussion? Thank you, councillor Tully.
Mayor, would I be able to talk to the relevant officer?
My apologies, councillor. Councillor, we can hear a dog barking in the background. Are you able to mute?
I'm sorry. I can't help, yeah, I can't help the dogs.
Yeah, would you be able to mute so we don't hear it? And then unmute if you wish to speak. Thank you very much. Appreciate that, councillor Ireland. Councillor Tully?
Thank you. Speak to the relevant officer, please, in relation to item three.
Thank you. So relevant council, two items, which is the SES Local Controller. Paper. Councillor Ireland, I think, are you unmute because we can hear the dog barking again?
Yeah, I've turned it. I don't want to play with it too much in case I lose you altogether. Sorry.
I just ask if you could hit the mute button. That way we won't hear the dog barking.
Okay.
Thank you.
CEO, may we have? I can't see Mr Madigan in the audience. It's an emergency management matter, but happy to take the question myself for else our local disaster coordinator, Mr Tabula, might be able to assist me.
No, I'm happy to direct it to you. I just need some clarification about, about the matter and sort of who's who. And I read the report, but it still wasn't clear to me what the functional change would be. And based on the current personnel and what will be different before the change and after the change.
I think it'd be important to have it to hear from. I think it'd be important to have it to hear from, um, the local council officer, it's basically almost like a mandated change from QFES. Mind you noting that there's going to be a change in SES restructure anyway.
Yeah, look.
Yeah, the, the essence, which I'm sure that you, uh, will have read, councillor Tully, is that the, uh, SES are moving away from the arrangement that has been in, in place for them to have, uh, the controller, uh, in situ as the officer themselves, and instead we're paying an honorarium towards that function being taken. Amount of money, in other words.
So, so that would be a, a different person from the moment?
Looks like Mr Pinder has come to our rescue, so to speak. Figure it, yeah, so could I, um, through you, Chair? May we ask Mr Pinder to come to the lectern?
Thank you, Mr Pinder.
Thank you, Mr Pinder. There's a question from councillor Tully, just to better understand the, the actual change in relation to the SES controller.
And I think, Mr, I'll let you, um, say who you are and your job title?
Uh, Matthew Pinder, Emergency Management Sustainability Manager.
Thank you, councillor Tully.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'm just trying to get a, an overall understanding, and I, and I know the, uh, we're being pushed is probably the right word, but I don't mean that negatively in relation to the changes, what it will be, who would appoint, uh, the controller? Uh, would they be under any direction from a council officer? They wouldn't be a council employee. I, I just want, want an overall sort of picture of what, what, what the change is, please.
So, look, the, the main change is around the funding arrangements. Um, so, oh, actually, I'll step back to the local controller position. It's a position under the Fire and Emergency Services Act, and it has, uh, always existed independently of council. Uh, what some of the complications are, is when, uh, there was a period when the officer was a council officer, and it meant they were bound by both the Queensland Government policies and council policies, and those policies quite often contradicted each other. Uh, so I was previously an officer in that position, where I had to abide by, for example, Queensland Government for Fire and Emergency Services has an open media policy, where council didn't. So if I spoke as SES local controller, under the Queensland Government policy, I was okay, but when I spoke under council policy, um, it could be a, a breach of that policy. So a trial was implemented, where we said to QFES to try and create, um, I suppose a bit of clarity around that, where we would, uh, pay them to employ an individual to perform the role of local controller. QFES has indicated that, that they don't wish to continue that arrangement. Um, so we are now left in the position where we have to find a local controller. Uh, so what the options were, was to go through and employ a council officer, which, um, having been in that position, was not something I would recommend or endorse, because it puts you in a very precarious position, reporting to two masters, so to speak. The other option is that it be a pure volunteer role, um, which I, I think is given the nature of it quite, um, it's not reasonable, um, given the expectations of that. Uh, the other option was to pay an honorarium, and that's the, the option that I've sort of recommended as part of the paper. So that is, uh, that option we had to be cautious around. If we paid too much in terms of an honorarium, it no longer becomes an honorarium, because it's akin to a payment for a wage, so you create an employee relationship. So a person's primary income couldn't come primarily from the honorarium. With regards to the appointment of an individual itself, council has a role to play in that, so we get to sit on the panel to, uh, appoint and select a person. So we will, as a council, we will always have a role in, uh, I suppose, monitoring the achievement against objectives and the appointment of that person.
Thank you. Um, so, so that panel would comprise council and state representatives?
Correct.
Yeah, I think that pretty well covers, um, the situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr Pinder? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr Pinder? Just for some clarity as well, um, councillor Tully, because I also had quite a few questions when I first came across this. Do you mind if I just read out, um, three paragraphs of advice that I received? I'm happy to email that to you.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I got this on the 11th of October. And the advice from the, um, from, um, actually Mr Pinder's boss, was that there are currently three deputy, because my concern was about what's happening in the storm season. So there are currently three deputy local controllers. Deputies are considered to have the necessary skills and experience to step into the local controller role as required, and would do so in the absence of the local controller. These arrangements would be implemented in the event that the current local controller finds another role prior to the 31st of December. QFES have today advised their intention to advertise the local controller vacancy on or after the 31st of October, and anticipate this will be finalised with an appointment in December. The recruitment process would necessarily involve discussion and significant consideration about availability of the candidates to fulfil the requirements of the role during a disaster event, for instance, after hours, weekends, extended durations, and so on. The local controller is to be nominated by the local government and appointed by the Commissioner under the Fire and Emergency Services Act of 1990, section 134. So the recruitment process will be jointly undertaken by QFES and ICC. In the scenario where the local controller is not available or is otherwise unable to fulfil their duties during a disaster event, there are provisions in the Act, section 136, which enable us to, in the event of a disaster, request QFES Commissioner to appoint an SES coordinator to temporarily fulfil the functions of the local controller. The Act also outlines in section 137 that the SES coordinator appointment is to be made in consultation with the local government, is temporary in nature and concludes at the end of the disaster event. And the SES coordinator functions are then carried out in consideration of the advice of the, uh, local disaster coordinator and the local disaster management group, in accordance with the local disaster management plan. QFES want to resolve the local controller arrangements ASAP and prior to the 31st of December, which is when their current role ends. Uh, we have advised QFES that a council resolution is pending to determine the arrangements for the local controller role. Can I just check that's been moved and seconded? Any other discussion? Yes, councillor Milligan?
Uh, I'd just like to, uh, thank, uh, councillor Fettner, uh, as, uh, Deputy Chair, um, for, uh, uh, the fact that, um, I attended via audio link, um, wasn't here in, uh, physically, um, for, uh, the outstanding job, uh, looking after the committee, uh, whilst I.
Yes, he did.
Wasn't physically here.
Thank you. In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We move on to item, um, 15.6, the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee.
Uh, thank you, Chair.
I'll just wait for councillor Fettner, councillor. Thank you, councillor Doyle, how would you like this report treated?
Uh, I move that, uh, council adopt the recommendations, um, of the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee, um, from the 13th of October 2022.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Milligan. Any discussion on the report? Okay, I'll move that, uh, we, uh, that the minutes, sorry, that we, I move, sorry, you've already moved it. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous, uh, in the chamber. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much, it's, it's unanimous and carried. I'll just wait for councillor Fettner and councillor, and the deputy mayor to return. Thank you, we now move on to item 16.1, which is the CEO Organisational Performance Report for September 2022. Does anyone like to ask the relevant council, so, ask the CEO any questions on this report? No, in that case, I'll move that the CEO's Organisational Performance Report for September be received and contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Kuntzleman. Any discussion on the report? No, I think it's a very good report, CEO, thank you very much. I think it covers, I think there, there were no questions, because it is, um, covering so many, uh, vital areas of our organisation. Thank you. So in that case, I'll move that vote to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous in the chamber. How do you vote, councillor Ireland?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much, it's unanimous and carried. We'll now move on to item 16.2, which is the Ipswich City Council Submission to the Change Commission Review of Divisional Arrangements, and the recommendation is that Ipswich City Council submission to the Change Commission regarding a review of divisional arrangements, attachment one, be received and noted. Does anyone have any account, questions of the relevant council officers? Yes, councillor Fettner? Yep. I think Mr Wilson's coming up.
Good morning, Mayor and councillors. Baid Wilson, Manager, Executive Services.
Thanks, Mr Wilson. Just, uh, um, brief question around the process that's followed when, um, when the Change Commission calls for a case for change, and what the process our council has been through to get to this point today, where we're noting a report that will be considered by the ECQ.
Sure, I'll just quickly outline the history on this one. Um, back in September, I recall, council resolved to write to the Minister for Local Government, requesting a midterm review of divisional arrangements. Um, if I recall correctly, it was the middle of this year, the minister had finished considering the matter and had responded to us, um, and directed the Change Commission. Uh, the minister's powers didn't extend to directing council to undertake a review, that's within the remit of the Electoral Commission. Um, since that time, we have had further discussions with the Electoral Commission to go over what form that may take, and what, um, activities and actions they were going to undertake as part of that review. Um, in parallel to those discussions happening, offices in my team and myself had held discussions with individual councillors, seeking their input, um, thoughts and feelings, getting an understanding for the feedback they've had from the community around this matter, um, to help form up a review, um, or, sorry, not a review, a, um, paper to submit to the Electoral Commission. So the next step in that process essentially is ECQ have set out their review timeline for this to occur, which is a, a whole process that they're undertaking. Council has no, um, real import or ability to influence this matter. Our position is nothing more than putting forward our thoughts and feelings on the, um, current arrangements and what we may see as occurring in the future, um, which is what's attached to this report today. Um, the authority on this is essentially the trigger back in September last year, where we requested this matter to be heard, um, and the minister agreed. Um, going forward, this is a receive a note report, so confirming the contents of the review, that councillors are satisfied with the contents, and it meets their thoughts, feelings and expectations. Um, the next step of this review is the Change Commission will hear from the residents of the Ipswich community.
Awesome, thanks, Mr Wilson, and thanks to your team for putting this together for us as well.
Welcome, thank you.
Are there any other questions of Mr Wilson? I think councillor Kuntzleman has a question.
Uh, thank you, um, Mr Wilson. Could you outline the likelihood of, sorry, the form of the com- community consultation? Do you know about that?
Uh, it's a relatively straightforward consultation process, um, and it follows the same pattern as what the Electoral Commission does for any change. Um, this being a, um, a divisional arrangements, or, and external boundaries process for the Electoral Commission. So through their Change Commission, um, processes in ECQ, effectively they do a public notification in relevant newspapers, on their website, et cetera, and seek written submissions from members of the community who may have an interest in the matter. Uh, the written submissions were slightly delayed by a week, but if I recall correctly, they open next Friday.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr Wilson?
Mayor, may, may I just?
Yes?
Please, CEO? I just thought, uh, might be just prudent to check on the Electoral Commission's website. So I, I do see that they have updated the website, that the opportunity to provide written submissions on the Ipswich City Council multi-member electoral arrangements will open, open on Monday the 14th of November this year, and close at 5pm on Monday the 28th of November. So they may have delayed a little further, um, but that looks to be the dates that they've, they've settled on.
Thank you, CEO.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will move this recommendation. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Kuntzleman. I'm opening up for now for discussion. I think the only discussion I'd like to run out is that, um, the Change Commission, when they brought out their report in 2019, highlighted the need for a midterm review, and as part of our good governance here, at the end of last year, as we're approaching that midterm, this council did write, um, to the state government, uh, requesting that, and obviously we received, uh, confirmation from the state government to, about that. So we're following this process that was set up before we were voted in, um, to that. And I, I strongly encourage residents to participate. Um, at the last time, I think only 1,049 residents participated in that survey. It would be wonderful to have more residents participate that and, and give their views there as well. Um, the submission that, um, we councillors have, have formed is in this attachment, and it's been published since last week. So, uh, we also recommend residents to read that report as well, under their consideration. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Unanimous. Affirmative.
Because affirmative, so it's unanimous. Thank you very much, councillor Ireland. Move on to item 16.3, which is the Monthly Financial Performance, uh, Report for September 2022. I note that, um, the CFO has given us another part of that submission, which I think will go online soon, or if it's not now. Um, that was the, um, performance report. Uh, does anyone have any questions on this report of council officers? No? In that case, I move that the report on council's financial performance with a period ending 30th of September 2022, submitted in accordance with section 204 of the Local Government Regulations 2012, be considered noted by council. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Um, any discussion? No, I just think the organisation proactively, I know it's a, with it, with construction costs and inflation rates, um, appreciate the close, uh, watch on our, on our finances. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much, it's unanimous and carried. We're now moving on, we have a couple of notices of motion. The first one is a joint notice of motion from, uh, myself, councillor Tully, councillor Kuntzleman, councillor Milligan, councillor Ireland and councillor Madison. And, um, it's a notice of motion that we have submitted regarding the Waste and Resource Recovery Centre proposed for, for Calvert. And the motion is that the site at 5452583, Rosewood Laidley Road, Calvert, be removed from consideration for the Western Resource Recovery Centre, or any facility of a similar nature. Uh, do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Milligan. I'll open it up for a discussion. Thank you, councillor Milligan.
Uh, ma'am, we probably should, um, remove the dash, uh, between Rosewood and Laidley. We don't have, um, any, anything like that in street names, they're actually just words.
Thank you very much. Any other, any discussion on the matter? Thank you, deputy mayor.
Um, I'd just like to say I'm happy with this path forward. Um, the reactivating of a historical use on a site like the one in question was one that I'm not comfortable with, given the proximity to households, um, got a number of residents there that are currently renovating their house, and this came as a shock to them. Um, also, it's, you know, the, the site doesn't even resemble its previous use when you drive past it, it's, it's a lot of trees on a hill, um, on a road that has a speed limit that is quite high, and it's already a bit dangerous with the crest, so, you know, we've talked about it at length, those reasons. Um, I just briefly wanted to highlight that, um, um, no issues whatsoever with the officers that considered the location. Um, I understand that they considered this location because of that historic use. Um, so from a technical perspective, it did look like it was going to be, um, one of the quicker options to move on, and, um, that was a, a consideration, um, because we had made it a priority for new waste. a consideration because we had made it a priority for new waste transfer stations across the city. So I'm pleased that that remains a priority to upgrade those facilities for our residents, but we're just going to take a bit longer getting the right place. And I've got full confidence that our officers will find somewhere that ticks all the boxes as we move forward.
Thank you deputy mayor. Any other?
My, my comment may, sorry.
Are the councillor Fekner?
My only concern with this is, and I guess a question to the councillors who put this notice of motion forward is how we manage the expectations of the community moving forward. If the new location is identified and that is no longer suitable for them and they make representations to this council, are we just going to continue to preclude options from our investigations to that end? Or is this more of a strategic decision that we're making to preclude this particular site in question?
Thank you councillor Ireland, I think was the next.
Thank you mayor. My concerns were that although it showed on the report that it was, we owned the land, so therefore it was the cheaper option to start with, that we still would have had to do a detailed design for the road because it is a state government road. And there was no, after spending all that money on a detailed design, there'd be no guarantee that the state government would still approve our design. So it could have blown out to much, much more than any of the other sites we've looked at. So thank you.
Thank you councillor, I think councillor Tully.
Yeah, thanks mayor. A number of us were at the meeting at the Rosewood Library just over two weeks ago. It is a very vexed question and the question that councillor Fekner has raised is quite right. It's always going to be a difficult decision, but for me, and I think the majority of councillors, that the this proposed site, which is on top of a hill at a hundred K zone and very little visibility, would need to have a lot of money injected into it to make it a usable site. It does raise the issue of where it will go because it needs to go somewhere. I know that at least one of the residents there thought you had executive powers. And I said she doesn't have powers like the American president to declare, declare it a no-go zone, that it's not going to happen. And there was the expectation that we would be making this decision today. But it is always, always a difficult issue, but I'm sure the people of Rosewood and surrounding areas will realise that as we move forward, in conjunction with them, with the appropriate discussions and officers and councillors' input, that we'll come up with the right decision.
Thank you councillor Tully, councillor Milligan?
Thank you Chair. I've made my thoughts known and the facts are that when the, this site was first proposed to us, I being a local of the greater area and know the site intrinsically, took some of my colleagues out and viewed firsthand the impacts, identified them ourselves. And as the proposal has moved forward, we have raised those matters and I'm very supportive of also the, the community within the local area have raised the same and similar impact concerns. And that is just common sense and logical that through the process, that we support our community by doing this notice of motion.
Thank you councillor Milligan. I can't remember which month was it, April or May then, we were first briefed on this and I do recall that, that very afternoon, so that, at that meeting, as councillors, we highlighted that, that very meeting, that there were issues with the, from the road perspective and the traffic and a lot of the discussion was on that. And I do note, I think yourself councillor, councillor Kunsman, I think councillor Madison and councillor, all four of you went that afternoon out to that particular site to re-inspect it and, and came back to the council saying that there were some issues, but there were already, the works were already in train. So I think it was important for, for that to occur. And noting that one of the weightings for the methodology was actually cost of council-owned the land and that was the only site that was put forward that was council-owned. So it did come forward as the number one, if I can respond to councillor Fekner's question, it did come forward as the number one. And under that methodology would always come up at number one, which is why we put forward to remove this. At the last community meeting, we did have some residents asked to remove other sites, we stood very firm. Councillor Fekner to say, no, we're just removing this one because it is council-owned and we actually agree that from a traffic perspective, we couldn't manage that. So we, we have held firm. One thing that came out during the community consultation is that residents were saying, why are they getting it when most of the growth is happening in the eastern part of the city? And so we did let them know that there's obviously plans under our resource recovery strategy to have two, to build two new resource recovery centres. So we made a commitment that we would, when we do that consultation, that we'll do both of them at the same time. So no one area of the city would feel as though they were getting it. It is a significant investment by the residents of Ipswich for us to better manage our waste. Our population is growing and both Riverview and Rosewood we've, we've grown out of. By developing these two resource recovery centres and doing that in consultation with the community will also give us options in regards to tip shop and, and other things as well. So it would be, I think, a great step forward. I want to thank the community for coming forward as well. And, and thank you councillor Tully at the last meeting for highlighting that even though residents said it, as the mayor, I have the sole discretion of what happens and I could order the council to stop it. Thank you for pointing out that we are a democracy, we're not a dictatorship and that it was, it would be a council decision. Sorry councillor Kunsman, I think you had your hand up.
Just for clarification mayor, I went out separately to the other group of councillors.
Okay, thank you councillor. There's nothing more?
Yeah, just.
Oh yeah, sorry councillor Fekner.
Just in closing, you, you mentioned that we couldn't manage the road upgrade, but I think councillor Tully made the better point there in saying that it would be of an enormous cost rather than us not being able to do that. I think that we are geared to, to be able to perform that, but I think the cost associated with that, yeah, as councillor Tully pointed out, would be extremely enormous. I also want to highlight the fact that this came about when we were looking to expand a state government grant, which had us under some pretty strict timelines to get this project going. And I'm pretty glad to see that we were able to move those funds into other projects to give us a little bit more time to think this through. It did feel a bit rushed, so now that we get to take a step back and consider multiple options, I think that this is probably the best possible outcome for us at this point.
Thank you, and I would acknowledge the Kuns, we're very accommodating in us moving this funding to other projects in council. There's nothing else, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chambers councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you, it's unanimous and carried, I'm just going to pause. Thank you, I'll just note we have some visitors into the public gallery. We'll move on to our final note, part of business, which is the notice of motion on sandbag availability and community consultation. This was put forward by councillor Johnic, I'll hand over to you councillor Johnic to, to move your motion.
Oh, thank you Chair. So my motion is fairly straightforward and simple in relation to the sandbag availability to our residents. I note that we made sandbags available ahead of our recent rain event and we also made them available in additional locations across the city, including the Goodna SES depot. So it's in four parts basically and it's, the first one is to consider making sandbags available earlier for our residents in significant weather events. And by significant, I mean considering the natural cycles of Enzo, so El Nino and La Nina. So obviously La Nina comes with added rainfall for Queensland. And it's not kind of, I guess, the status quo, but it can be predicted by the bureau. So that's what I meant by significant weather events. I had a number of residents and, and ministers and businesses in contact with me the week before, leading up to the forecasted rain, trying to get prepared for the rainfall that was coming. And so I think that we can play a part in helping them be prepared. So I see that as a great sign. So I just wanted further communication, better communication on this. So Brisbane City Council's website has a, a landing page for sandbags and it's really short and straightforward. And there's a video on it and it shows the effectiveness and the limitations of sandbagging and to use plastic sheeting to aid the waterproof, because obviously sandbags aren't waterproof in themselves. And I think that's about it, thanks.
Thank you, do we have a second for that motion? Thank you councillor Fekner. Do you wish to speak to that, any further? Councillor Johnic?
With the recent website, the, the page that went up on our website, sorry, about sandbags, it was talking about how ineffective they are. And they definitely have their limitations and they're, they're not waterproof. But my house in particular was this time, in eleven, it went over the roof, so three and a half metres higher than the Brisbane River was, and so that was basically my home. But this time around in February, it was two inches under my, my door from entering. So yes, I got my furniture out on Friday and I, if I sandbagged my home and the floods were a foot higher and I used them properly and laid them properly and used plastic sheeting, I think that that would have aided in, in preventing, you know, the dirty water and inundation in my home. And also I would have plugged my drains for any backflow of water, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fekner's the second, do you wish to speak to it?
Just that I support this notice of motion and thank councillor Johnic for bringing it to us today.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I guess I just want to say that councillor Kunsman, her capacity is the Deputy LDM Chair, LDMG Local Disaster Management Group Chair and Chair of the Recovery Group and councillor Milligan, his capacity is the Chair of the Council's Environment Sustainability Committee, where these policies do come to as a committee. And he also is the Deputy Chair of the LDMG and myself as the Chair have been working very closely with the Emergency Management Unit in council. Council staff and members of the Local Disaster Management Group and members of those that, of that group that I chair include QFares, SES, Queensland Police Service, Department of Education, Department of Communities, Red Cross, Give it, NBN, Telstra, Enerjex and so on. Have worked tirelessly this year to repair and rebuild and have recently turned their attention to preparing for a predicted third La Nina season. Our city can have full confidence in council's preparation for the coming wet season. Council's already published resources on sandbags on its website. Resources developed by the Queensland Foreign Emergency Services and the State Emergency Service as statewide standards. One of the key findings from the Inspector General of Emergency Management Review into the flood event at the start of this year, that was tabled in Queensland Parliament just two weeks ago, was the importance of standardised disaster information communication. Particularly council's use of the Australian Warning System, national standardised approach gave residents clear and easily, easily understood information that helped them better understand the unfolding emergency. The Inspector General of Emergency Management has recommended that national standardisation should be expanded and more widely adopted to prevent region by region differences and to ensure consistent approaches regardless of local jurisdiction. In fact, the Inspector General of Emergency Management, in his report praised Ipswich City Council's approach to delivering warnings and using Australian Warning System National Standardised Approach. Floods and fires do not respect city boundaries, so it makes sense that information should be standardised as much as possible. I would also point out that council is waiting on the results of our own review of the February March events. I think it would be prudent for us also to wait and find out what that review says. I understand that residents are deeply anxious ahead of what is predicted to be a third wet summer in a row and recent warnings of significant rainfall and creeks rising comparatively small falls have heightened these concerns. The QFares resources, including frequently asked questions and instructional videos, are all available on council's website already. I would strongly urge residents who are concerned or want more information on sandbags to visit council's website and read the frequently asked questions, watch the video, follow the links to the QFares resources or even approach your local SES group. I also share my fellow councillors' preference for our committee structures to be used as the main forum for policy discussions. As such, I'd like to move a procedural motion to refer this notice of motion to the Environment Sustainability Committee for its consideration at that particular committee. So I'll put that procedural motion forward. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Kunsman. Thank you very much.
Can I clarify, is the intention to take it off the agenda today?
Well, to move it to, we have a committee structure for a reason, I believe that it should be going to the Environment Sustainability Committee for discussion.
Well.
Whether doesn't, whether doesn't follow our meeting procedure.
So I've moved a procedural motion for this to move to the Environment Sustainability Committee for consideration, it's been seconded. I'll put that to the vote, those in favour? Myself and councillor Kunsman, how do you vote councillor Ireland?
Negative.
Okay, thank you, those against? Thank you, the deputy mayor, councillor Johnic, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Fekner, councillor Milligan. Thank you very much, so the notice of motion is still in process. Any other discussion? I'll move to you councillor Johnic as a writer of reply.
I never wrote this to offend anyone in any of our disaster management and leadership roles. I've got the utmost respect for all of you for doing and working tirelessly. This was to help my residents because it's a very anxious time and I didn't think it was, yeah, I didn't think it was going to cause any issues. However, I would like to make an amendment to my motion and add, Eve? I'm really sorry, I don't know what's the matter with me.
I know this is.
So had council, council consider alternative flood prevention options that can be made available to residents in place of sandbags, in place and along with sandbags?
Do you want to adjournment?
Thank you Chair.
I'll move in adjournment, I know this is very, I know because councillor Johnic herself was flooded in two thousand. So thank you very. So I ask a call for an adjournment, how long would you like the adjournment? Fifteen minutes? So it's ten at ten, I will adjourn to ten twenty-five. I note that councillor Doyle and councillor Johnic have left the room, so I'll call a vote with those who are in the room, those in favour. It's unanimous in the chambers councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much, that's carried, we'll be back here at ten twenty-five. Do we have a D was? We're live. Thank you very much. We're back after our German. It's 10:26. And I think before we adjourned, we were looking at recommendation E from councillor Johnic. I'm not sure where we got to that. Would you mind? That council consider flood preventative options that can be made available in place of sandbags. I think councillor Johnic moved for that amendment. I think councillor Fittner was the second for this. Are you happy? Happy with that? Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Sorry, ma'am. Yep. Sorry, ma'am.
Alternative, alternative.
That can be made available. I believe the intention was not in place of sandbags, but to supplement.
It was available in addition to.
In addition to.
Okay, in addition.
Available to residents in addition to sandbags.
So councillor Fittner, are you comfortable with that as the second?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Could I suggest an addition where it, please, where it says flood preventative and and mitigation, and mitigation options?
So that flood, is it alternative flood preventative and mitigation options?
Yes.
Is that correct councillor Tully? Okay. I'll just check with councillor Fittner as the second, as the chair, I'm comfortable with that as well.
Yeah, thank you.
The mover's not here.
Yep.
Thank you. Would we like any other discussion on the matter? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous whether council's in the room. I know that councillor Johnic's not here. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much.
Ma'am, could I just ask the CEO, that there's elements of that motion that require consideration by council. Would that then, now that it's been carried, would that be normal to refer that as a carried motion to the Environment and Sustainability Committee for that consideration?
That would be a very reasonable course of action that I, yeah, would agree with.
I'd just ask the mayor and other councillors whether we need a motion to do that or like a procedural motion now that it's been carried to do that?
Yes, you would.
Okay, well I'll move that motion, not the motion, the resolution be referred to the Environment and Sustainability Committee for implementation, consideration and implementation.
So councillor, I've moved that procedural motion, that this may be referred to the Environment Sustainability Committee for consideration?
No, not the motion, the resolution.
So the resolution, sorry. At the above resolution. Can you read that councillor Tully? Are you comfortable with that?
For consideration and implementation.
I'm happy to second that procedural motion. Any discussion? I'll put that procedural motion to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. Thank you for that. We're now moving to item 18, which is the questions on notice. Are there any questions on notice that people would like to raise? No, in that case, I'll declare the meeting closed at 10:30. Thank you.
Thanks everyone.